I'd like to call to order this meeting in the Winston and School Committee. It is Thursday, January 8th, 2015, and it is 7:01 PM.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a statement. It is with great sadness, I would like to make a motion to reorganize the current school committee, removing Michael Niles from the chairman position for the following reason. On December 17th, Chairman Niles allowed a town employee, the town accountant, to speak and attack our schools and the operations of our central office. Vice Chair Bertzall arranged this appearance without informing all members of the committee that this would occur. When the town accountant started to speak negatively and inaccurately about the schools, Chairman Niles allowed it to drag on for about 45 minutes, then proceeded to shut down our superintendent when he tried to defend us. It is my belief, as well as many parents and citizens, that Chairman Niles no longer represents the schools and children's best interests. For reasons we will never understand, our school system is under constant attack unwarranted by our town government. We need strong leadership and total commitment in support of our schools to deal with this. Can I get a second to my motion?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote? All those in favor?
Please get a call vote.
All.
When you reorganize, usually a superintendent does it.
You had to do it? That's a new one.
I've never had it. I don't know, it wasn't on the agenda.
Dawn Harris?
Aye.
Susan Bertzall?
No.
Niles, Michael Niles?
No.
Andrea?
Yes.
Hosky. Michael Barrow?
Yes.
All right. So we reorganized. So what's the next move?
You call for nominations.
Call for nomination for a chair?
I would like to nominate Dawn Harris as the new chairperson, as she is an unbiased, fair member, who I believe will be a good leader and bring our committee back together as one unit with the sole focus on our schools and the education of our children. Dawn may be new, but she is a strong, intelligent woman who does her homework and has already worked hard as a volunteer in our system for many years. Dawn also is the only member who has children in the system. Can I get a second for Dawn?
Second.
Roll call. Now, Dawn Harris?
I accept.
Voting yes?
No.
Michael Niles?
Upstein.
Upstein?
Yes.
Andrea, yes. And Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Yes. Congratulations. You're the new chair.
Thank you, Dawn.
Do we still have to do congratulations?
I will take it carefully and promptly, and please come to me with any questions or concerns, and I'll learn along the way. Are there any further questions or comments?
I would like to make a comment, please. This has obviously taken some of us completely by surprise, and I'm not in agreement, and I hope you understand it's absolutely nothing about whether or not you're capable, able, willing, or would fairly represent. I'm sorry, Andrea, that you were not at the meeting that you referenced, but not being present nor having a conversation with any of the reason for that particular presentation, and not having any reasoning whatsoever from a chair or a vice chair as to what might have transpired, why it transpired, or why the conversation, as it was degrading that evening, was shut down when it was. But, thank you.
Anything further?
No.
Any other correspondence or announcements?
We just have one announcement and correspondence, is we did receive the annual donation for Mikes. Mr. Mikes, you know, I think it's the Exxon mobile donation that they give to our high school, middle school, and we received it just before the holidays, but today we got the final papers, and we obviously thank them, as they do every year. We're very grateful that money goes to usually supporting any kind of activities for math and science in middle school and high school, and we received a check for that. It's for the amount of $500 that goes directly to student activities.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept the money from Mr. Mikes for the student activities.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Was that it?
Yeah, that's it for correspondence and announcements.
I don't see any students in the now superintendent and business office.
Yes, yeah, we do have, we're going to be starting our business, our discussions for the budget on this coming Thursday, and I'm going to ask any, any one of you if you have any priorities you'd like us to consider, or any kind of concerns, or any ideas, or any kind of suggestions you might have, to send them to us. We'd love to include them in our, on our agenda on Thursday, so we can discuss them together with our team, and we should hopefully come back to you fairly soon with some recommendations for a budget. I know that in a few minutes, we will have also our business office make a statement on that, but if you'd allow me, Madam Chair, is, I'd like to read a statement if you'd like, if you would allow me to. This is a news release that I'm going to be releasing fairly soon to the news media. At our last school meeting, school committee meeting, on Wednesday, December 17, 2014, the town accountant requested to speak. During her address, she raised some serious concerns about the schools, having lost nearly $20,000 in payroll in September 2014 by paying a total of six employees who had already retired. As you probably all heard during the holidays, such mistakes are not uncommon, as recently reported in another district, where they happened to not only having not paid people, but taking money out of their account instead of paying them. So mistakes do happen, and they did happen. When they did happen, we reported it immediately to the school committee, and we reported it to the town as well. These mistakes, however, are easily fixed, as banking laws allow for reversing the transactions. What was particularly unsettling was the information revealed by the town manager that as of December 17, 2014, nearly three months after, later, after the funds were still and collected. That was, and I had asked the question twice, if you recall, for those of you who had, were current or heard, seen this, I've asked that question twice, and I was told that, that three months later, we still have not collected the funds. This news was immediately reported in the, on the next day, local newspaper. The following day, I received requested from the town accountant's office via email, information on the employees who refused to pay back, and any evidence of the efforts made by the town to collect the funds. We offered our assistance to collect the funds, obviously because these were our employees, we know them, so it'll be, makes more sense for us to get involved in helping them collect the fund. After a couple of days, I received information from the town treasurer that the funds in question were not only recovered, but that happened back in October of 2014, two months before the meeting at which the town accountant reported them as not collected. Once again, the media failed to check the facts before reporting the news. I'm not really sure what was the motivation behind the faulty reporting. Was the town accountant misinformed? That's still a possibility. I would certainly hope that any official in any news media would check the facts before making public such a damning report that has no other consequence than upsetting the community and slandering the reputation of the school administrators and the contracted professionals involved with school finances. This is not the first time that such erroneous claims have been made about school finances. You might recall the misreported, misreporting of $2 million deficit, school deficit that was never there. I hope this would be the last time we have these erroneous reports about the schools. At least, it's my New Year's wish that it is the case. In all of these faulty reports, even after the facts and evidence proved otherwise, we have not seen any retraction by the individuals making the reports and/or the news media who rush to print them. That's why I'm compelled today to make this statement, and the statement is available to all the media. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, just for the record, Barry Martin is going to do the minutes via tape.
Okay.
She is not able to be here.
We have no other reports, ma'am, and we do have a business report.
Okay, so what I'm sending around to you are two documents. One of them is the FY16 budget timeline, tentative budget timeline, and the second is the year-to-date results from operations for FY15. If we look at the FY16 budget development timeline, we basically worked off of the schedule that was used last year. The dates that you see on there were the initial dates from school committee meetings that were set up on the town calendar. They've since been removed, but I figure rather than changing it a third time, and when the dates are set, then I'll revise this and send another revised copy to everyone. And also, there are some fill-in-the-blank issues on there, like the warrant articles, the town, when the budget needs to be sent to town officials, and meeting with finance committee, because there's no finance committee meeting scheduled yet, so we can fill in those dates, but at least we have a working document to operate from, and internally, as Dr. Kelfawi said, we'll be meeting with the administration to go over their department budgets and compile the budget together for the town. In addition, we have the operating budget thus far for the school, for the LEA, for If you notice, there are a few lines that are in deficit that we're working on transfers for. We've been doing some research, and there's some changes that need to be made that we'll be sending to the town accountant. The first round of transfers that you had approved in a prior meeting has been sent to the town accountant on the 26th, and we're now working on a second set of transfers to adjust the negative balances in these lines. With the exception of, if you look at the bottom, the sped private school tuitions and tuitions to collaboratives, those will be addressed as money comes in from the state, from Circuit Breaker, and for sped tuitions, because as the DOR pointed out to us when we had our meetings with the town and the school officials, they don't want to see any balances expended in the Circuit Breaker lines or revolving accounts unless there's funds available. So as funds become available, they will be transferred, but the over expenditure will reside in these lines during the process until the funds become available.
Madam Chair, have we not, through to the chair, to the business department, have we not received any of our quarterly funds from the state on Circuit Breaker at this point?
We have. We received the September payment. The December payment has not been posted yet.
And what is that to date?
To date, $217,000.
For the one quarter?
For the, for the one quarter, plus the $121,000 that the, was the final payment in FY14, which through the settlement process, the DOR allowed to be posted and available in FY15. So it's a combination of the funds available from the final payment in FY14, plus one payment in FY15.
So, can you just run the numbers by me, because I'm not showing the numbers in, I'm only showing the expense out?
Well, they're not, they're not here, because these are the local budget numbers. The Circuit Breaker numbers are not part of the LEA, so they're not part of this budget.
Okay, so that money that's been, been in, that's in the Circuit Breaker account, has any, has any of that been expended yet?
Yes.
Does that not reflect in this tuition to collaboratives?
Correct. It doesn't, because it's been expended, what's, what's been received has been expended in the Circuit Breaker account.
Okay.
Any other questions or to continue?
The only other item I have is, as you know, we're, we're in a collaborative transportation bid, bid being administered by the City of Gardner, and we're in there with several other districts, and I just have a document that basically it allows the City of Gardner to be our agent, and I just need it signed by the chair and Dr. Kelfawi, so that they can represent us in the bid process, which the bid will be on January 29th.
Do you need it today?
Sure.
Make a motion that we allow Gardner to open up the bid for the school transportation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Has the town manager been informed of this? Because he is the one that ends up paying the bill.
He has been informed of, he is aware of the bid and the time, timeline of the bid, yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes. No, that's okay, go.
As, as, as the budget's proceeding right now, how do we, how, how are we shaping up overall? Are we staying within our budget?
Well, overall, it's a very tight budget, and one of, you know, one of the issues that will be, you know, very telling is, we are still looking to complete and submit to Harper's, which we will do by tomorrow. I did tell the school committee at our last meeting that we would have it done by the 26th, but unfortunately, there was another priority that came in relative to Harper's from the town hall, so we've been continuing to work on what is essentially a mapping of staff to their org and object codes, in other words, where they're paid out of in the line item budget. So we're, we're finalizing that, and we'll submit it to them. That will allow us to get expended salary information back and posted into Munis, so that we have that piece in the budget.
But in our overall budget, are we on track?
Overall, it's a tight, but on-track budget. I would not recommend lifting the freeze, however.
I'm interested in lifting the freeze at this time. Does our food service budget look okay?
Food service budget has been going very positively. They've been, it started out in deficit, and they will be coming on the 20, at the next school committee meeting, to do a full presentation, because their financials will be ready on the 12th, so that they will, at that point, be able to present the financials for halfway through the year. As I started to say, they started out in deficit, because there's a lot of startup costs involved and purchases that need to be made, but they have been making up ground with each month, so I think we're going to see that as of this month that they present to us, we're, they're going to be pretty close to breaking, breaking even, and that is by being profitable month after month after month. So they've been recouping their initial expenses, and it's actually been going quite well.
Thank you. Anybody else with questions? Is that it for your business report?
That's it.
Okay. Old business, we had listed the second reading of the domestic violence policy, however, I'm requesting to waive that for tonight, because throughout the holidays...
Motion to table at this time?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass, all passed.
Can we put that under next, on the next meeting agenda, then?
Yes. All right, new business was listed, the budget discussion, but we've already taken care of that? Or did you have some more?
Yep, pretty much. I mean, I think the only thing that we're going to be sending to the office of the town manager, what they requested of us by the 22nd, I believe, was the deadline, so Cindy Landano, Mrs. Landano, is working on those figures for transportation to try to get the best accurate possible. We're going to give them, I'm sure we're going to give you guys a ballpark figure on the budgets. We don't know what the appropriations are, and we'll do the best we can to give them a good idea to the town of what the budget is going to be, ballpark. We would, we wouldn't know until we get some final figures from the state, and, and again, we will hear more after our next meeting on Thursday.
Okay. And the school committee business calendar, is that you, Mr. Barrow?
Oh, that's the school, the, no.
No?
Overall calendar. The school, the school committee calendar is us setting our calendar for meetings.
Okay.
Which would be the first and third, right?
Okay, sticking to the first and third.
Yes, yes, but in addition to that, the suggestion was made that before we, is, in, in keeping with regular business, that we stick to some calendar dates. Most of the ones that, that, you know, we, we already have, for instance, some fairly regularly set policy subcommittee meetings. I don't believe that there are other subcommittee meeting dates. We have, Mr. Barrow and I do have one next Wednesday, I believe.
Wednesday, 14, right?
Yes.
On the legal subcommittee?
Right, and I think policy is also on the 14th.
Yeah, on the 14th.
It's a busy day, right?
What time is your legal meeting?
Seven.
7:00 PM?
Yes.
So the rest of the suggestions, other than other subcommittee meeting dates, reports and updates is to have a, to have a calendar set out for the school committee with ideas and suggestions from everyone that we can discuss later, discuss at a workshop, that, so that we're just not falling behind on some of the other things, the quarterly joint meetings, the reviewing, any of the contract issues, setting goals, doing a little bit more in-depth, once a year at least, on student enrollments, choice in, choice out numbers, that kind of thing. So if anyone has ideas or suggestions, I'd, I'd be happy to put something like that together.
We still on for the workshop for Saturday?
The workshop is...
Next Saturday, right?
Correct.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yeah.
Did you deter?
I'm totally missed, I missed on that, I guess.
The workshop on a Saturday, did you decide on the time?
I don't believe that it's been, I don't believe that it's been posted. We didn't, there was an email that had been sent to everyone asking for any additional ideas or suggestions to be sent to Mike Niles, so that he could sort of finalize a general agenda.
Because didn't he want to invite the other locals? Or was this just going to be us?
It was just going to be us.
Yes.
Yeah. But, that's, as the committee wishes, that's, let's see. But that's, as the committee wishes, that's, let's see.
The time would everybody like to?
I think the idea was the Saturday, the 17th, at nine o'clock in central office conference room.
Nine AM. You don't require a superintendent, right?
You are welcome at any and all.
I'm okay with that time.
That works for me also.
Does it?
Do I have to have a motion to accept a workshop meeting?
No.
No?
Okay.
Just needs to be posted.
Okay, we need posted from nine AM until about?
I'm sorry.
Doesn't matter, okay. Yeah, we'll just post it starting time nine AM.
Probably four, four hours or so.
Okay.
Should I contact Lauren tomorrow then?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Until we ever, until we get hungry and ugly.
Right. That's a, that's a good timeframe.
Once the blood sugar goes down, you know. So, you'll go to Lauren with posting?
Madam Chair? You'll need to get in touch with MASC.
Okay.
And coordinate in that meeting, get some notes from Mike.
Gilbert. Right.
Not Mike Niles, because he, I don't know if he's talked to Pac Carrera or.
I don't think so. I think we were, we were just going to pretty much do it ourselves, a, a quick review of roles, responsibilities. There was another email with the, slipping my mind now.
Well, after Mike calms down, I'm sure we can touch base with him.
Okay.
Okay, as for our next meeting, did we decide, are we going next week or the following week? How are we gonna, now that the holidays are over?
First and third week is the normal schedule.
I know, but right now, we're on the second.
Second and fourth?
Right, second week.
So, we're on the second week already?
Yes.
Because the first was the first week of January.
So, for January, we'll go second and fourth, and then start first and third fresh with February?
I'm okay with that, is everybody okay with that?
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
So, the next meeting is the 22nd?
Yes.
And then February will be scheduled for the first and third Thursday.
Okay.
Is there any other new business anybody had? No? Okay. Minutes to approve?
Motion to approve and hold executive session minutes for October 23rd, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair says aye.
I don't have the executive session for December 4th, so.
I'd like to make a motion, please, that we approve but hold the minutes from December 4th executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Absolutely, because I didn't have them.
And Chair votes aye?
Motion to approve the minutes from the school committee meeting December 4th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Approved and released.
If we're at questions and comments, may I just zip back to the minutes from December 4th to ask a question?
Sure.
The, it was a healthcare, healthcare questions and an update during that meeting when it was talked about that the rollout of a new plan with the, the MTA and other employees was, rollout is tentatively scheduled for February 1st, and more information would be provided from a consultant. Do we have an update?
I don't.
As.
Does Mr. Kreidler have a healthcare update?
Madam Chairman, and members of the school committee, there is a meeting scheduled of the insurance advisory committee for next week, and outreach has been made to all of the union representatives, as well as, as per the, the discussion of the joint meeting sometime back in November. Outreach has also been made to non-union representatives from both the school department as well as the general government. So, I did receive from Dr. Kelfawi, Jim Murphy, as the representative, as a non-unionized school employee rep. So, those invitations have gone out, and we will have that presentation made by the consultants at that meeting next week.
Do you, what time, what day is the time next week?
I'd like to say Thursday at three.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Town Manager. You said at the last meeting that the reason why they were holding back was to analyze the next month's numbers. They were trending down. Are we still trending down?
We're still looking at, waiting to see the final bill come in for this most recent month, but we have been, the ones we have seen to date are all still trending down.
So, it's continuing?
Yes.
That's good news.
Yes.
By the way, congratulations, the town's finances have been signed off by the governor.
Anything else that can help?
Any other questions for healthcare?
Madam Chairman, while I'm here, Dr. Kelfawi did mention the 22nd being the deadline for submission of budget items.
Yes.
I understand that there is a, that there might be a discussion about capital items for the school department, but that won't take place in time for the deadline of a 22nd. So, I did want to just make it, make it known, if you do need your additional meeting to take up any capital items in order to get them voted to be submitted, I believe your next meeting is the 22nd.
Right.
So, you would have, you'd have missed that deadline. So, by all means, if you do take those votes up on the 22nd, getting them in the next day would be quite fine.
Do you know, you remember when the capital meeting?
I do not. I'm not certain that one has been scheduled as of yet.
Who is your?
I haven't heard anything as of this point of capital, anything going through capital. I think we're waiting to see how things were playing out. Just, if in fact you do get to the 22nd, the next day is, is fine, that's all.
The next day is?
Sure. It will be a Friday, and we're close to the public, but staff does work, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Were you outside with any questions and comments?
Yes, thank you.
Andrea, any further questions or comments?
Nope, I'm all set right now, thank you.
Mr. Barbaro?
As I just announced, the town manager, the governor did sign off on the town's fiscal bailout. I'm glad to hear that that has taken place. This will close a chapter of the town that I hope we can continue to move forward for. I just hope as we go into the new year that we create, foster a more community working environment between the departments. We are all part of the same town. I was quite taken back by that meeting on the 7th, I have seen the tape. In the future, if something like that needs to be said, it should be sent via email, the reason why. So, if some people could come prepared, if inaccurate statements are made, they could be corrected. Obviously, it was December 17th, it's now the beginning of January. We have not had a chance to respond to those accusations, and I just felt that that, that was carried on too long and shouldn't have happened. It's not, that was an operational issue, not a school committee issue. It should have been worked out ahead of time between the superintendent, the town manager, and the business department. In the future, if anything like that happens again, I wish that's the way it goes. It's called chain of command that superseded it, and I was very unhappy about it. Other than that, I'm glad to be here again. I'm glad that this, there's no snow, but I don't like the cold. So, wish everyone a happy new year, and we continue to move forward. We look forward to the new governor's school budget numbers, Chapter 70, we'll all see how that plays out. And we look forward. Thank you.
Thank you. As for me, I'm just surprised by sitting in this chair, and I hope I can do right by everybody. I'm on for a new year. And we need to go into executive session.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes?
There's generally a section during a meeting set aside for public comment.
Oh, is that at the top? Sorry.
It was, it was at the top, right.
Do you have a comment?
I'd really would like to come forward.
Yes, please.
Madam Chairman, I came here tonight basically as a correspondent for the local paper. And obviously, because I'm sitting in this chair, I'm not going to be able to report on this committee meeting or future committee meetings likely, and that may please some people on the committee and administration, I don't know. But I, I have to say that I am really taken aback at, at what I witnessed here tonight, and I'm speaking as, as a resident of the town. There seems to be an almost a nastiness creeping into the politics of this town at large and at some of the meetings. And I don't know why that is. If some selectmen do what you disagree with, recall them. If a chairman runs a meeting in a way you disapprove, remove him. If town employees make a mistake as humans are wont to do, fire them. And I just, I hate to see that happening in this, in this community. There's room for disagreement, and there's room for civil discussion on those disagreements. And I have to tell you that, sitting here tonight and having at one time sat on the school committee with Mike Niles, and knowing the number of years that Mike has committed to this school committee and to the children and the taxpayers of this town, I think it, it goes from beyond unfortunate, quite frankly, to nearly obscene to have it implied that he did not have the best interest of the children of this community at heart the entire time he served on this committee. And quite frankly, I think that the statement, and Andrea, you certainly have a right to your opinion, but I think to imply that, that Mr. Niles, after his years of service to this town, didn't have the best interest of the town, again, at heart because of the way he ran a meeting a couple of weeks ago, frankly, is obscene, and I, I really wish people would maybe sometimes just back off, let their emotions subside a little bit, and take a little time to, to consider what they're doing. I don't know if you had a chance to talk to Mike before you made this proposal tonight, to ask him about why he did what he did at the last meeting. Again, as a resident, I, I saw no problem with, with Donna sitting here saying what she had to say. The superintendent certainly is no shrinking violet, and, and he's able to defend the committee, he's able to defend the school department, and he, he's, as far as I'm concerned, and I've been able to see, has, has done a pretty good job at it. I guess I'll pretty much leave it there. I just, I think that, that the treatment that, that Mike Niles was subjected to tonight was, was shabby. And frankly, I, I think that, that the action, I think you should, I think you should be ashamed.
Well, we thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
But the committee wants to be run.
I, I'd like to just have a chance to respond because obviously, it was my motion. I think that Mr. Niles doesn't have the interest of the school at hand now. My intent tonight was not to wipe away 10 to whatever, 14 years of commitment to the schools. I think, again, and, and again, you, I, I have said this so many times, I just get sick of hearing it. There's nobody in this room that wants to work together more than myself, or for that matter, every person involved in the schools. And we have reached out time and time again and put our own requests aside and gone with what we were told would be the best thing. Like, for instance, we're drawing our motion at the town meeting for the audit. We were told, don't worry, the finance committee's going to take care of it, you know, go with the flow. We keep getting told that, and then every time we do, somebody turns on us. I don't know how to make that stop either, Mr. Vine, and I totally respect you and your reporting. I think your reporting has been some of the most fair. However, that being said, I, I can't, you know, Mr. Niles, if, again, you don't know what's going on behind the scenes. Why would I talk to Mr. Niles? He hasn't spoken to me. Again, like I said, they invited her to that meeting. There was not an email that went out to everybody that said, you know, Donna will be appearing. I mean, I probably couldn't have come to the meeting anyway, but still, the, the lack of communication and the problems that have, have occurred in the past couple of months, it wasn't like that in the beginning. So, I, I mean, so, again, sometimes you, you reap what you sow.
But the, the lack of communication apparently seems to go both ways. I, I think, again, as someone who served this, this town for, for many years over the past decade and a half, that, that he deserved, whether it was you, or, or you, or Mike, should have approached him about this and said that you were considering removing him as chairman, or given him a chance to explain why he ran the meeting the way he ran it, rather than simply, again, you know, you say you're basing your actions on where Mike is now. You didn't say that in your resolution tonight. You didn't say anything acknowledging the time and the commitment he's, the hundreds and hundreds of hours he's given this town. It was, it was simply a statement that he doesn't have the best interest of the town at heart, and that's where it was left, and I think that's really unfortunate.
Well, we will be reaching out to Mr. Niles. It's not like he was kicked out of the room, or the committee, or it's just, he's changed his position of seating. Thank you. Any other comments? Nope. Do we call for executive session?
Okay.
All right, we need to go to an executive session for purpose number three, to discuss strategy, strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if a meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position or the public body, and the chair so declares, and to return to open session for sole purpose of adjoining. Mr. Barbaro?
Aye.
Yes, Andrea?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye?